We have a chance.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good afternoon. We didn't have anyone sign up, I believe, Vicky, correct? Okay. So we will move on to approval of the minutes of the January 5th meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion in second. Jinx, jinx. I have a motion in a second. I'll let Vicky decide who is first and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Those are approved. Onto approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. The agenda's approved. We did not have any new conflicts presented. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Item seven A through D. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Those are approved. Onto the reports of the president. First, we have the career services report. Paula, thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon. It's good to see you guys. And now I'm just gonna learn how to do the stuff that I do every day and can't quite figure out on the day I need to. All right, there we go. All right. So I'm Paula Hox. I'm the career services coordinator and one of the student success advisors at Southeast Technical College. And I am here to just give you an overview of career services and what we've been doing there, as well as some information about our Build Dakota program, which is booming this year. So, very exciting. And why does it make me today? Thank you. I swear to God, I have a degree in technology. All right. So, a little bit of an overview. What is the career services office, particularly at Southeast Tech and in most of the, I would imagine, all of the technical colleges in South Dakota? We are members of the National Association of Colleges and Employers, which means that we are nationally recognized and accredited program through the career services office. And we do a placement report each year. I'm pleased to report that we had a 99% placement last year. If I may brag just a little bit, it's like a 99.45% placement, and we're on track to do that again this year. So that's been an incredible, an incredible effort by everybody at Southeast Tech. That's, that's not just a career, career office endeavor. That's everybody. That's everybody. So I'm very pleased to work with a team that is so dedicated to making sure our placement is high. We do provide a great variety of services in that office, including our online job board, which is well-used by our employers. I'll give you some numbers on that in a little bit. We have career fairs throughout the year. I do 12 career fairs from September until May. I just had one today. Thankfully, President Griggs reminded me I needed to be here today. But we had one of our largest career fairs today. A record number of employers came for our engineering career fair. They had 30, 35 employers there. And all of our students had a great opportunity to visit with employers. And they are clamoring for our students. Other services, I write a lot of resumes. I write a lot of cover letters. I should say I revise. I don't write them for them, but I, I do kind of write them for them. And then I do mock interviews. And all of the student success advisors work with those, those skills with students. We're really pushing to help students understand the importance of presenting themselves professionally. And we're really helping them get ready for that professional opportunity that they're going to be looking for when they graduate. And we're working hard to get ourselves into all of the different programs and help those students recognize how that looks different for them when they're an engineer, as opposed to being an LPN or being a computer programmer, whatever that happens to be. And then, of course, our Build Dakota Industry Relations, which I will talk about more here in just a minute as well. Maury, that did not work. All right. Career Connections is our online job board. I'm pleased to let you know that we have well over 3,100 employers who have profiles on Career Connections. And out of that, we have 3,600 contacts. It's actually a lot closer to 4,000 at this point. We've had quite a number of people sign up for the online job board in the last four months. There are more than 1,200 job postings on there. Some of those are out of the immediate region. But 770 of those 1,200 job postings are right in the Sioux Falls area and in, in South Dakota. We have a few that come from West River, but the vast majority of them are right here in the Sioux Falls region. And then we have 3,300 plus student alumni profiles. We're getting very good at getting our students to recognize the importance of looking at that online job board, building their network, and making those connections with our employers. Those are our partners. Those are the people that we can't do what we do without. So we're really working to get those, those students connected. As I said, we have career fairs. We have 12 throughout the school year. They're industry-specific. I'm working on a 13th career fair with our law enforcement students. Because they are in such high demand right now, I don't, I can't think of a program at Southeast Tech that isn't in high demand. And so we bring well over 200 employers to the campus. Like I said, we had 40, 37 today. Every program is involved. It reaches all of our students. Everybody has a specific career fair that they can attend and build that network with. And, and bringing those employers really helps us build partnerships with industry and build those industry relations. And that's due to not just the Career Center hard work, but the, the program instructors. Good Lord. Those program instructors and, of course, our deans and our administrators make a great effort to getting those partnerships as well. Other services, I kind of talked about that. I'm finally getting those students to come in and do those mock interviews. Nobody likes sitting across that table talking to somebody about themselves. But I tell them, if they come and do it with me, the real one will be a breeze, because I will tear them apart and tell them exactly what they didn't do right, so that they do it well when they're in front of the right person. So, really working hard to get students to take advantage of those services while they have them for free. And then the, the, the only thing I do in the spring, it feels like, is our Build Dakota Industry Relations and connecting up our industry sponsors and making sure that we have folks who are willing to sponsor the students. Right now, we have 283 applications that are in process. We have about 90 that have submitted their Build Dakota application. We, we figure on having probably close to 300, 350 of those applications that will be submitted. So we'll have 350 students to live, let those industry partners choose from. Right now, I have 45 sponsors lined up for this year, and I have about four more who are still kind of, maybe, maybe not. I think I want to. I'm not sure I can put that money down. And then I have, I have about 30 that talk to me. And then, you know, they just don't quite push the, the button at the end. But we're gonna keep working on that. And again, our program instructors are phenomenal in helping us secure those industry sponsors. But they're really getting quite a, an incredible opportunity by being an industry sponsor. And, and we'll continue to work really hard to make sure that those Build Dakota opportunities are available for our students. We had 108 of those kids last year. I figure we'll have about that, if not a few more this year.
So do they choose the specific program that students are involved in, that they want to sponsor?
So they, they do. So the way that that works, the Build Dakota program has a specific set of programs that are available for Build Dakota. Those are high need, you know, workforce development areas that are in desperate need. And so there are specific ones through Southeast Tech. There are specific ones at Lake Area Tech. Some of them overlap and are the same. But we have specific programs in automotive, healthcare, CIS, and in, in the industrial technology programs. So I would list them off for you, but I would miss one, and then I'd feel terrible. But the way that works then is that the industry sponsor, so Avera and Sanford are two of our very largest. Avera is looking to sponsor 40-some kids this year. Sanford always sponsors somewhere in that 25 to 30 range. So they're huge. And they, they select students. The way that I work it, it's, I put it in the hands of the industry sponsor, because that's where it belongs. I'm there to be a liaison. I'm not gonna pick kids to go where they go. The industry sponsor gets a shared folder from me. They can dig through all of those applications. They invite those students in for shadowing experiences or interviews, and then they make offers. And then we say, congratulations, you have a scholarship. You're gonna graduate debt-free.
And I encourage, Mark, you were on the board before, but we, there's a signing day that, that you guys put on, and it's fabulous. So where they actually come in and sign for their scholarship, and they get, again, their sponsor, and it's a wonderful experience.
We, yeah, we, we do it big, because it is a big deal. Those kids are making a huge commitment, but they're also getting a great opportunity to start out life on a, on a higher step.
Thank you.
You bet. If you have any questions about that, I would be happy to answer them through email or whatever. I'm very passionate about Build Dakota.
Tell your passion about everything you do. You do a good job.
That is true. I love my job.
The other neat thing, the partnerships you've created, what I was excited to see when I went to the last signing, is that some of our Native American tribes that you've partnered with, and they sponsor students that are from their tribe. So I just think that's a wonderful partnership, too, that you have.
Two more of those coming on this year. Fingers crossed. So, yeah, it's been an incredible opportunity for them. So, yeah. All right. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Do you have a motion to acknowledge the career services report?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That is approved. Onto medical assisting academic report. And Joe.
Oh, are you good? As I say, hi, so Joe.
I'll say I'm the dean of Prickham Instruction for Health Programs. And Joe Penning is gonna present first on the medical assisting program. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Joe Penning. I'm with PD for the medical assisting program. So some of the program highlights, as you can see, we are in a one-year diploma program. We started in 2019, so we're fairly new yet. Our current number of students are at 34. A very diverse program. We do get students from everywhere. Fall '22, we have 38 applications, applications in with 14 accepted. Again, we also have a part-time program. There's five apps in for that. And then we also have a program in Huron as well that we just started. And for the fall, we are looking at five applicants that have been approved already. We have a full-time option, so that is basically only daytime. And students are taking 16 credits the first and second semester. And then on their third semester, they do what's called a practicum or clinical, where they spend 210 hours out in a clinical site. They stay in one site, and then they, they perform all the duties that they would do. And then we have a part-time option as well. For, for non-traditional students, someone that's maybe working or is just coming back into the school. They come in, in the evening. They can kind of take it at a slower pace and get more used to it. So we have a, that usually lasts about a year and a half for them to get through that whole thing. This is an annual report form that I have to make out for accreditation. I feel like we've done a really good job. Obviously, it's only been two years that I've had to report so far, but we have a very good retention level, over 80%. Graduates are very satisfied. We have 100% rating on, on graduation satisfaction, and employer satisfaction is at 100% as well. And our students have to take a certification exam once they complete the program to get a job. And we've been doing pretty well with exam participation as well. We had 100% the first year and 93% last year. I had one who was pregnant and had, for some reason, didn't want to really study. I can't understand why. This is just a couple of pictures. As you can see, we have it set up just like an exam room. The other picture is, we just spent this week learning how to set up sterile field, assisting with minor surgeries. So I have a student taking out stitches right there. And in our lab part, we teach them how to do phlebotomy. They learn how to do different CLIA wave testing. So if there's a picture of a colostec. We have hemocues, make, have them do mono test, rapid strep test. So they learn pretty much a lot of the CLIA wave tests, so they're ready to go out there. As for wages, I've been very lucky, because both of the hospital systems have been really supportive of us. We're not a Build Dakota program, but I have had, right now, Avera is sponsoring eight students for me. And Sanford is sponsoring, I believe, five. And wages for them, probably starting out, are gonna be about $16 to $20. I can tell you that independents really pay a little bit more than what the hospital systems do, but I feel like they are doing really well. Wages have come up a long ways from what they were probably even five years ago. It is one of the most sought-after careers right now. It's very hot. And we're seeing a lot of people calling and asking for our students to come over there.
Thank you. What a great report. And, yeah, you know, I was just gonna thank you for what you're doing. And a great new program, and obviously, well-needed in our community. So thank you for everything you do.
I think, isn't this one that we've talked about, trying to maybe get some, what started at Lake CTE from a high school perspective, and potentially letting them get some of those classes so that they could stack onto that, too? So I think, like you mentioned, the, the demand is obviously there. So how can we help students to, you know, get their foot in a little bit earlier and, and have some good experiences while they're still in high school? And maybe shorten up that timeframe for the classes at Southeast Tech, so.
Okay. Do you have a motion to acknowledge the medical assisting academic?
Second.
I have a motion in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you. Onto medical coding and billing academic.
So Sarah Anderson is our instructor for medical coding and billing. Several different options for completion in this program. I'll let you explain this.
Hi, guys. It's good to see you.
You too.
So, okay, I am the medical coding faculty full-time. And like Kristen said, we have a few programs. We have a certificate program and a diploma program and an associate program. We have four certificate students right now, 13 diploma and 24 associate. Sometime our students start with a diploma, but then hear about the careers for the second year, as far as risk management and patient coding. So then they'll switch to that associate once they kind of hear more about it. Not a lot of people know about medical coding. A lot of the students, their aunt does it or their mother does it from home, and it's a remote position. Coding started remote probably 15 years ago. We were the first ones to get sent home to work from home, way before COVID. So that's kind of been nice for those of us that have kids and were able to take them to school and pick them up and stuff. So that's kind of one of the perks that students here, we can work remote, so that's why we're here. Or they know someone. They want to work in the medical field, but they don't want to work with people. Sometimes they're not very social people, so it's a good business to get into. So we do have a medical certificate program, which we don't have any students in right now. They typically go to the coding, because they're so tied together, that you might as well learn that coding piece, because a lot of denials could be coding-related, so. So some highlights, the associate degree is four semesters. We do have a hybrid option for the part-time students. It's 61 credits, and again, there's 24 students. The diploma is three semesters, 35 credits, and the 13 students. And then our certificate is 18 credits. So I have a lot of students asking, what's the difference between getting a certificate and a diploma? It's just a lot cheaper, a lot quicker. And you get your foot in the door, and then you can train when you're there. So it's a matter of, do you want to move up quicker, get that associate, or just take the time to move up? And that's really good if you don't have a lot of money. You can still, with experience, make good money without having to go to school that long. So I've got the curriculum up here. So there are, for the associate program, we have more gen eds typically. And the other difference is, as you can see, in the summer, all the students take that code 180 CPC review. So the good thing about our associate students is that they can actually, after their first year, sit for their CPC credential and start working. And then sit for their inpatient credential after their second year. So they'll have two credentials after they're done. And they don't have to do that, but it's just good experience. That's the outpatient setting, because coding on the outpatient setting is a lot different than inpatient. Different revenue, different reporting guidelines and such. So that's kind of a nice thing for them with that program. You'll see there's a virtual practicum. That virtual practicum, they just get a lot of op notes, a lot of abstracting. So they get more real-world op notes than they see in the typical textbook. Those are kind of short, not realistic. So the practicum is really nice. So they have an outpatient practicum and an inpatient. And then there's that diploma, which is pretty much a lot of the same classes. They'll get the billing classes. So they learn that the revenue cycle is, starts with prior auth to get that right information and get that cash flow going from the beginning. Getting that clean claim out is pretty important, so we stress the importance of getting it right the first time. And so they will sit for that, that's code 180 class as well. And then the certificate, it's just kind of spread out a little bit more. And then that is our billing certificate. Like I said, we don't have students right now. I'm not sure if we'll keep that program, but we're kind of watch the numbers on that. So we prepare them for their credential. And so the associate, you can go through the AHIMA, American Health Information Management Association. You can sit for your CCS, which is a certified coding specialist. That shows employers that you can do outpatient and inpatient in one credential. They can sit for their CIC, which shows inpatient, certified inpatient coder credential. Again, they can have two credentials if they decide to sit for that CPC. Diploma is that CPC and the medical billing. They can sit for their certified professional biller credential. And the other two programs could sit for that as well. The nice thing is you can keep adding credentials in this career. You can have up to 10, 15 credentials in specialties, which kind of adds value without having to go back to school. So we learn about coding, the ICD-10, CBT, HIXPICS Level 2, the SUPPLIES. There's a bill for everything if we can code it legally. And PCS is the inpatient procedural, which is completely different and system. We offer the 3M encoder system at Southeast Tech, which is really nice, because most people use encoder systems. And it has a lot of extra rules and regulations in that, so that prepares them for industry for that encoder system. Looks good on the resume, too. So our responsibilities are to follow those official coding guidelines. Medical necessity is a huge one, making sure we have that code linkage. If there's a lab or an x-ray, we make sure that there's a diagnostic reason for it. And if not, we have to query that physician. We have to make sure we do a professional query and we have everything right. Or we have to put our name on it, actually, and our phone number. So we have to make sure we know what we're talking about on that. So sequencing is a big thing as well. The reason the patient came in, we have to make sure we sequence that first, because that is the revenue for inpatients. We work denial management. Of course, understanding anatomy, physiology is important. Then we also have the compliance with AMA, conditions of participation, JCO, and the OIG that they learn about. Integrity, availability, and security of the health record. Of course, we are the record keepers. Make sure we don't release anything to anyone that shouldn't get that. So they learn all about the legal aspects, too. So the nice thing about our accrediting bodies is that there's so many different credentials that we can get further on. So I like to talk to my students about that and say, you can just get this credential and code the rest of your life if you want, and make a great living. Or, you know, plant those seeds of that risk management job and that compliance, risk auditors and such. And then the American Academy of Professional Coders, you can see there's quite a few credentials you can get for that. Compliance officer, physician practice management. So it's just a great opportunity to, as you're ready throughout your life, add credentials. And what I like about these specialty credentials, as you can see, as students are coding, they might decide that they really like cardiology, or they do not like cardiology. I would say interventional radiology is the hardest coding there is. They should make a lot more money, because it is very difficult. E and M coding and some, let's see, pediatrics, orthopedic, lots of orthopedic ASCs out there to work for. So I really like the fact that they can add these credentials. And then I've got some salary information. I got this from AHIMA and AAIPC. And you can see, the longer you work, the more money you can make. So that's kind of nice, even if you don't add a credential. Experience gets you that extra money. And then I also have the salary by credential up there as well. And just different areas that coders can work. There's compliance, there's information technology. CDI is a popular one. Working with those nurses, adding the knowledge of the coder, the laws and regulations with a CDI nurse to get that documentation is, is a good one. And I also added some other salary surveys from different articles from there as well. As you can see, the increase in pay is, is, keeps going up, which is nice. And then if, as you add credentials, you can add value. So each, as you add those, you can definitely add more money to your, to your household, which is nice. So what's coming up, what's new is, AAIPC is now holding their local chapter meetings at Southeast Tech. The students are able to attend for credits, and they get to network and meet with other people in the business and talk about jobs. And if there is a student that's graduated, they can network with other people, and they actually are finding jobs that way. So it's nice having that out there. So it's nice, I get to see students that have graduated and they come to meetings. So I kind of like that, too. So we're also gonna hold the certification exams on campus, so they can actually, once they graduate, feel comfortable coming in and taking it in the same place that they learned. So that's kind of nice that we're gonna do that. So we've had a lot of industry reach out to us. NSN is a good partner that we've had. They, I actually worked for them at one point, and they work for ambulatory surgery centers across the country. They have about 154. And so they are revenue-driven from contracting all the way to denials and coding. So we have a few students that work there. Orthopedic Institute has reached out. Vance Thompson, we have a student there. Burroughs Counseling, it's a gentleman that started his own counseling business. He came in and talked to the students and hired someone two days later, as she was still in school. So, and that was kind of nice. Theta Care, that is a company out of Wisconsin. That's the first remote job that a student has gotten. And he hadn't done any coding yet. He got his foot in the door at Sanford. And he said that, they said, he's probably gonna be one of the best coders they have. So that's a great compliment to get. And then Raz has reached out. They're in Sherrapola. They do work comp billing. So they came and spoke to the students. They do work comp billing, so they came and spoke to the students. And Anderson Smith Therapy came in as well. So it's nice that this is industry reaching out to us. And I just say, come on in and tell them about the job and, and the students love it, so. And we are working on an articulation agreement with DSU. So they're reviewing our syllabi right now. So hopefully students, if they decide to go on to their bachelors and masters, they can do that as well. So that's it.
It's outstanding. I love that with the articulation agreement that you can stack on to the degree. And I just think about the data analytics that they're doing in their job. And, you know, even like USD, I know they have a business healthcare administration, business data analytics program too. It'd be interesting to see if we could even partner with them too on that side. Because I just think data analyst jobs are really growing right now in the college atmosphere too, so.
And it seems when you get into information technology, your pay doubles, is from what I heard you just, yeah.
Yep. Right. Thank you.
I'd say in the couple of jobs that I have had at, at my employment, I've always been working with coders and I'm always amazed at what they know and how they can pull stuff out of notes and where they get that from. And it is, as things change, and Kate, you can attest to that from the insurance perspective too, but I remember when we switched to ICD-10 and it was like, we kept delaying it because nobody wanted to do it. And then I think finally the government was like, this is the date, October 1st of whatever that year was. And, I mean, it was hard and people, you know, and even now, you know, we try to get physicians and providers to do some of the coding themselves, but we, I always laugh because we have a code 999 and that basically means I did something, look at my note and decide what I did. Because it's so complex and physicians don't go to school to memorize codes. And so that's the important job to make sure that they're billing correctly and that you're not being overpaid or overbilled or underbilled or they're being overpaid or underpaid or whatever. And so, yeah, it's, it's very detail-oriented, but such an important, an important role. So very cool. I didn't know a lot of that, so that was very interesting.
It's interesting. It's, it's an interesting job. It's a lot harder than students expect it to be. And so there, you know, you just look up codes, but there's so much more to it. And like you said, it's the, one, one line item could cost money or you could lose thousands of dollars with one line item. So it is really important, so, yeah.
Thank you.
And it's not just in the health systems, it's also in insurance, like you mentioned. It, it will reimburse insurance companies that are involved in the Affordable Care Act. And if there's appropriate coding, then you get reimbursed by the federal government. And it could go on and on and on about risk adjustment, but, but I won't bore everybody with that. But, so yeah, I, I feel like in Sioux Falls, we've got such an advantage, not just because of the health systems, but all the provider systems we've got here, as well as insurance companies and everything else. So it's great that we've got such a strong program here in Sioux Falls that can provide students opportunities for our employers too, so.
Thank you, Sarah. Do you have a motion to approve or acknowledge the medical coding and billing academic?
So moved.
Second.
A motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are on to FY '22 second quarter finance.
Good afternoon, President Mickelson and members of the board. Just a very brief, high-level review of where we stand as of December. You approved the full BP report in the consent agenda. Just a couple of things I wanted to point out and I think actually in the, you probably appreciate, I'll skip a few of these. So as I put this together, it's a very high-level summary and it's kind of a, just a one-year look back. So we're not looking at a lot of longitudinal data to try to trend. And the phrase in accounting is, it's never the best to use a rearview mirror as you're trying to move forward, but this is what we have to work with. So as I look at this, I'm, I'm really laying the FY '20 projections or FY '22, where we kind of sit right now, comparison to the budget. So when I develop the projections for '22, I'm looking at, where were we at at this point last year? So it's just a one-year approach. So we've talked about this in our enrollment and some of the numbers that we're seeing. So we're trailing a little bit behind where we anticipated or where we had hoped to be when the budget was adopted. It's not a huge percentage, not a huge number, but more of an awareness issue. When you get down on the expenditure side of it, you start looking at our various categories, comparing to where we were first quarter, you'll see that on the next slide. Again, very close. And when you think about $23 million, we're halfway through the year. We're trending at that $133,000. So again, not a huge number, not a huge percentage of the overall expenditures. So I think as you, you look at this next screen, and again, it's just a snapshot, just a high-level review. And you look at some of these major categories that we have in terms of revenue, we actually gained some ground. And again, it's from where we were at last year. So what that means is when we compare first quarter to second quarter on the revenue components, we didn't have that melt at the same level that we had in the first quarter. It slowed in the second quarter. So that's a positive trend heading into the next semester to see. So hopefully, fall to spring retention, that carries over into that and that carries over into the end of the year. So you start to see numbers flip around as we go through the year. Lost a little bit of ground when you look at the wages other, but most of that's in a part-time category. So it's not a structured thing. It's, it's stuff that can have a lot of variance due to the year. So again, awareness, something we're keeping an eye on, but not, not a big deal at this point. So when you look at where we had projected first quarter, where we're at second quarter, like I said, we lost a little bit of ground, but again, very high level, not a deep dive into the numbers. But again, to point out that we are at least paying attention to some of it and trying to do what we can to address those things. So very quickly, that's what I have on the details that were on the finance report. Just very high level, nothing in there jumped off the page at me. You know, you get that standard variance that moves back and forth. Couple of categories a little bit higher. Some of that's timing difference. Some of it, we maybe heard a little bit more than what we had planned. Property is one that stands out, post-secondary fund, insurance costs were higher. We're probably going to start to see some upward pressure on utilities too, as we get into that next quarter. It's those kinds of things. But everything else is falling relatively in line on this expenditure side of stuff. Bookstore, no surprises there. You kind of see it flip because we've done our cost of goods sold or bought our product for the spring sale. So that's why you see that expenditures coming up in that second quarter. It'll be mostly sales as we get to report the next one because we bought that inventory in the, in the second quarter for the sales that happened in the third. Food service looks better year to year in terms of revenue. A lot of that's a return to normal. Where last year we were operating in a lot of a high-growth status. So, so things are looking good there. Obviously, we'll have a little more expenditure because we're selling more products, so not unusual. Childcare, again, very quickly. We are having a transfer. You approved that at the last board meeting where we had to address some of that in a cash transfer. That was approved. That's now reflected in here. There's some additional grants coming. There's a lot of support for childcare through the federal relief money. So I know Tammy just applied for another grant for another contribution or another donation. What they want to call it, a grant, I guess, is the, for lack of better terms, that can be used to support the wages of it. So good things there as well. Well, that's the five-minute quick and dirty on, on the reports. Any questions on any of the detail that we can certainly try to dive into a little bit deeper?
Seeing none. Thank you very much, Rich, for your report. And I think there's some exciting things with our grant applications and her fund accessibility as well, so that will help some of these numbers as well. So thank you very much for the report. Annie, do you have a motion to acknowledge the second quarter finance report for FY '22?
Second.
A motion is second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Anything else, President Griggs?
Good afternoon, President Mickelson, members of the board. I just wanted to take a minute to recognize an individual that's given a number of years of service to Southeast Tech, our faculty and our students. I fortunately have to inform you that Dr. Craig Peters will be leaving Southeast Tech and pursuing other options. But he has served admirably and has done so much. I was thinking in terms of his time at Southeast, 23 years of service to Southeast Tech. And in that, in his many different roles, I, I think there, there has not been a program that he has not at some point provided leadership with. And he is going to be greatly missed by our faculty, our staff and our administration. But I would like to recognize Craig and, and thank him for, again, his years of service to our students and our staff and our faculty. Craig? Still hoping he changes his mind, but just.
There's still time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Seeing no other information, and thank you, Craig, from the board as well. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion second. All those in paper signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you.